City seven. Today is March 12th, 2024, meeting of the Independence Planning Commission. For those who are unfamiliar with our meeting, it's the responsibility of this commission to hold a public hearing and make recommendations to the city council on matters relating to zoning, land use within the city. We also consider and make decisions on plaits, special use permits, and other issues, as well as each in the codes and policies that relate to city planning. At this time, let's stand up and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight, you want to take a roll real quick?
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Present.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Here.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Here.
Chairman McLean?
Here.
And Acting Chair Nesbit?
Here.
Okay, is there anybody who would like to speak tonight? Would you stand up? And where's that part at?
Do the department heads have to?
I don't know, do the department heads have to?
Swearing.
Swearing?
I think it probably would be appropriate.
Okay. Let me see here. Where is that at? Okay, everybody who wishes to speak tonight needs to stand up and raise their right hand for swearing, please. And that'd be the chair, yeah, because we might have to have you all speak or something. Okay. Do you all just swear to tell the whole truth before this commission? If so, please say, "I do." Okay, thank you. Okay, now to the agenda. We have a case that needs to be continued, is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Consent agenda first.
I move we continue case 24-810-01 to the April 9th Planning Commission meeting.
The second.
Okay, we got that and the second. We need to take a vote, please.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Nesbit?
Yes. Okay, case 24-810-01 has been moved to the April 9th meeting. Okay, new business. We have capital improvements program.
We have one more.
I only said one.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Okay, we got another case.
I move that we continue case 24-400-04 to the March 26th Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded, so take a roll, please.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Nesbit?
Yes. Okay, case 24-400-04 has been moved to the March 26th meeting.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
I move we approve the consent agenda. Second.
Okay, so we got a, do we have any discussion on that? Does the medicine and everything look good to everybody? Okay, let's take a vote on that.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neal?
Yes.
Commissioner H. Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L. Wiley?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Nesbit?
Yes. Okay, the consent agenda's been approved. Okay, now to new business, capital improvements program.
Thank you. So for tonight, we are discussing our 2024-2030 Capital Improvements Program. This is a six-year program. We do update this every year, realize that these are a list of projects, they're capital projects. We'll kind of go through the slideshow a little bit and talk about some of the highlights for this next 2024-2025 budget year. But these are projects that basically go from anywhere. They can be capital projects that stem from sewers, storm, street. They can also be anything related to vehicles. They can be anything related to studies or designs, like engineering designs for some of these projects, and it could be facilities. The CIP this year contains 148 projects. It represents over a half a billion dollars, 522 million to be exact. Municipal Services Department, and we'll talk a little bit more about all the things that they include, they have the highest number of projects this year at 86. That's been the trend as we've seen for the last few years. For this fiscal year, 2024-2025, our expenditures are approximately 80.9 million or 81 million. This year, you'll see when you look at the actual details for the projects, we use what's called priority-based budgeting. We actually did this for the first time last year. I hate to call it a score, but that's essentially kind of what it is. It scores the projects. It better aligns, it's a process that's used, accounting uses this, and it essentially aligns the resources and funding to these projects, and it gives the community and it gives us a better understanding of how that project really has a true cost and the impacts that it has here within the city. And so, we do have some discussions that talk about how all these things get rated. You can see the impacts and the number of populations or the people that it impacts a particular project. However, you know, we'll kind of just get into this next year, some of the highlighted projects that we have. For example, we have the police department. Really, they don't have a lot, but they do have a Bearcat that they're replacing for this year. Our fire department does include a replacement for Station 8, which is currently over at Powell and Truman Road. This is basically to replace a new 20,000-square-foot station on 78 Highway and combine that with an existing training facility. Municipal Services Department, they now covered, last year they covered Street Storm Sewer. This year, with the addition of the Water Department, they include those projects as well. And this particular project, and you'll see this, you've seen this probably in years past, if you're familiar with the CIP, but the pavement preventive maintenance operation project, that is an ongoing project that they do yearly, and that is basically to make sure our streets are in good condition, which they definitely need some of those repairs after this winter. But that includes things like cracked ceiling, mill and overlays, and those types of projects. Municipal Services also includes storm projects. One of their highlighted projects for this next year is the Rockwood Storm Drainage Improvement Project. It's intended to have about 3,500 feet of eroded stream banks, deteriorated storm drainage facilities as part of that project. As far as sewer projects are concerned, and this is a design project for this next fiscal year, but this is the Upper Adair Sewer Interceptor Project. It seeks to look at rerouting sanitary sewer flows across I-70 from areas southwest of I-70 and Nolan Road to reduce capacity issues. This project will also be reviewing storage needs to avoid any downstream sewage overflows and backups. We have the Water Main Replacement Program, also part of the Municipal Services Department now. This is an ongoing project that you've seen from year to year. This is basically to fund necessary modifications to the city's water distribution system, and then they use this program also in conjunction with new developments and redevelopments to make sure that the city infrastructure is in good condition. They also have a future production well project for this next fiscal year that will seek construction and development of future water production wells of the Courtney Bend Water Plant. Parks and Recreation projects to highlight this year include an overlay of the Independence Athletic Complex parking lot and to have some renovations to the Rotary Park playground. And finally, our Independence Power and Light Projects includes construction of a new Substation S project. This is a substation to help serve the North Point Development Project. This is located between Arti Mize and south of 78 Highway on the north, east of Little Blue Parkway. Then they also have a purchase of Evergy Substation A to Substation S, which is a 69,000-volt transmission line. So, as I mentioned, this is a fluid document. This document's primarily used by each one of these departments to really solidify their following your budgets, and it is fluid because we have projects that may change based on, maybe there might become grant funding available, and so maybe that project gets moved up. As time goes on, we'll also see other infrastructure that may need to be improved, and some of these projects may get combined together, they may get separated out, and some projects may get moved up. So, you know, as we say, this is a fluid document. The intent here for this Planning Commission, you know, we take this, I can tell you, our charter basically says this comes before Planning Commission. Planning Commission makes a recommendation, we present it to the city manager, city manager presents it to the city council. But really, the goal here is to see these projects. You're probably not going to remember all of these from years, you know, from years past or even in the future, but be aware that these projects could have impacts on developments that come before this body, whether it's a new development or redevelopment type of project, could be residential or it could be commercial. And, you know, we do our best when we put our staff reports together to include if whether any of those development projects that come before you have capital projects that may be involved or tied to this document. So with that, I'll basically open it up to questions. I will ask, we have Adam Dustman virtually, and as you might imagine, his time has been very much taken up over this last several weeks, and I would ask if you had any questions in regards to any of their projects that that would be first, along with the Fire Department.
Anybody got any questions? I just have one for Adam. Adam, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. The Bearcat replacement, so we have one right now. Are we going to keep it or are we going to completely get rid of that one and put in a new one or we'll have two?
So, thank you for the question and for the entire commission. Apparently I have a cameo from good old seven-year-old Owen here as well. I appreciate you allowing me to be here virtually and prioritize some time with my family. So, we are going to keep both. So as you might imagine, and I want to be clear on this, the events of February 29th, this piece of equipment, while vital for special operations, would not have changed the outcome that was unfortunately the devastation of that day. What it does provide is a rapid deployment of our personnel and also a tactical extraction. So it would have provided fast evacuation and faster evacuation of our personnel, along with Mr. Mack, to awaiting EMS and fire personnel. So, this asset that we have now, the Bearcat, there are two versions of this. They're called APCs, armored personnel carriers, fully armored vehicles. We deploy them often. Last year, we deployed our full call-out SWAT team 106 times, and so that piece of equipment is used on almost all of those call-outs as necessary. Most recently, prior to the 29th, we deployed our Bearcat along with several other armored personnel carriers to the Blue Ridge barricade that we had that spanned several days, over 24 hours, and we switched out that armor. But our armor was actually stationary in the backyard while we used Kansas City's Bear, which is the larger version of this platform, in the front. So, our intention, we first purchased our Bearcat that we have now in 2006 and have deployed it ever since with great success. However, as you can imagine, in those 19 years, it has become very worn down and in need of repair often. As a matter of fact, and I share this just again as an example of some of those unsung heroic acts from the 29th that the community probably is not aware of, but important for me to highlight. Our Bearcat was down for repair, and when we do that, we rely on our mutual aid partners, in this case, Kansas City, to provide their armor. We actually had Kansas City and Lee Summit that were deploying their armor, and they were in route. We had a, one of our civilian employees, our fleet manager, hearing the call come out and knowing that this equipment is extremely vital in these circumstances, actually took it upon himself to drive to Metro Ford, obtain our armor that was in need of repair but still drivable, and began getting it to the scene, to the staging location, so that it could be deployed. It ended up that Kansas City's armor arrived there shortly before, so he was able to turn around and take it back to the dealership for its repair. But that's one of those stories that probably doesn't get highlighted enough from that day of the heroic acts that were deployed. So, again, Vice Chair Nesbit, more directly to your point, we will deploy or order with the approval through the budget process, and just like large apparatus, like our command post that you had last year and many fire apparatus, we're looking at probably a 12-to-18 month lead time for this vehicle to be delivered. So we will continue to utilize and repair our current one and deploy it as we're able. Once we take delivery of this new Bearcat, what our intention is, is that will be our primary vehicle, and then we will retain our secondary vehicle, and we will be able to use that for training scenarios as well as larger operations that don't need the static and long-lasting armor to deploy. Most recently, like I said, in the Blue Ridge scenario where we planted our armor in the backyard, that would be a good secondary deployment of the older Bearcat that we could go and use that as a static place cover and protection for our officers that deploy for various operations.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair?
Go ahead.
Hi, Chief.
Hi, Lori Dean.
First of all, let me just say, it was a pleasure to see your leadership over the last week or so. Thank you for being who you are. My question is, you were very, well, there's not a lot on the capital improvement plans for the police department, because next year, we have a giant spend on a justice system. My question to you is, if I look at those years around that or after that, since we're going from today to 2030, I know there are communication needs, technology needs, and my question was, is it your hope or expectation that the Justice Center will include all of those needed technology upgrades as well? Or one, is that coming from the technology budget, which is separate? Or can we expect some other needs to appear, you know, next time we do this, next year or the year after that? I just know that we had talked about like the body-worn cameras, that new technology was needed for that, things like that. So I just want to make sure we're not, you're not being so kind with the budget because we're so focused on the Justice Center itself that we're not penny-pinching in other areas that the police has some needs.
No, I appreciate the question. So we, again, there's a phased approach for a lot of this. You know, we did the command post, which was a big ask and a big budget item last year, and we're very thankful and grateful to be able to realize that long-needed equipment that we have. The, so, the Justice Center will include new technology for sure as part of the build-out of those facilities should the GeoBond pass, and so there's a possibility that we will bring that forward a little bit as we have those needs. But we are in good shape financially and fiscally as far as the infrastructure that's needed to roll out the body camera program. And just to update the commission, as well as the community, we are on schedule for a May 1 deployment. We have received almost all of our technology, whether it be body cams and the in-car cameras and the infrastructure that goes around that program, and so we're on schedule with Axon to deploy that May first. So, no doubt, there will be some other needs. As far as communication specifically, we have asked the Jackson County Legislature to help subsidize through the 911 fund that's collected as a 911 tax on cell phones and other landlines. Our infrastructure needs to fully update and stand up our backup site at South Patrol should we have a critical infrastructure failure at our dispatch center. So we will continue to work towards those ends. I'm also very proud to inform the community and this commission today that I have a meeting on Thursday. With Congress through the federal fiscal budget this year, he had asked for an appropriation for community project funding, and we were selected as one of those, along with Kansas City, Missouri Police Department, for the deployment of additional license plate readers covering our major corridor to help with our investigative efforts. And we will, we will be receiving in total $963,000 from the federal budget. And so I have a meeting with Congressman Cleaver and Chief Graves on Thursday to kind of look at what that deployment looks like. So, I guess the short answer, Commissioner Wiley, to your point, is that we will continue to look for funding to offset the direct spend. You know, that's our job, to make sure that our tax dollars are used in the most fiscally responsible way and a targeted way so that they're doing the most good. And so as we get into building out the Justice Center and that complex, obviously, there will be some needs that will arise, but we will continue to try to maximize the additional outside funding and support that we get from our partners in the community to make sure that we use and maximize those dollars in the most responsible way forward.
All right, thank you so much.
Anything else? Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you all, and I would stick around, but as you can see, I have an anxious seven-year-old that's waiting to play some Connect Four. So thank you all for your time tonight. Thank you to my fellow city staff that are there that I saw. Love you all. We absolutely feel all of your support, and I really appreciate you allowing me to go first tonight. Take care.
Thank you, Chief Dustman.
Thank you.
Okay, you guys want to go in any certain order or how we want to do this, guys?
I would ask if maybe we can have the Fire Department go next.
That's why I was wondering if we just go like down the list and start off with, so...
Yeah, we do have, just so you know, we do have Municipal Services here, we do have Tech Services, we have Parks and Rec, and we have Accounting and along with Fire. Did I miss anybody?
Okay, so anybody got any questions about fire? I have a few, if nobody else does. Come on up, guys.
I want to know about the aerial fire apparatus.
Well, that would be a big fire truck, I hope.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity and...
Bring it up top. Just take the whole mic and bring it up on top.
Okay.
There you go.
There we go. Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners, and thanks for the opportunity to be here with you tonight, and it is an extreme pleasure to be with you and answer any questions that we can for you.
Okay. The question for the additional fire stations, do we already own the land or do we still got to purchase land?
So, Station 8, we do own the property. That's the property that the Fire Academy is, Training Academy is on.
Okay.
So we'll be using part of that for the new Station 8.
Okay, so we don't have to worry about land there? We already have land, so the building's 13 million, all that stuff, that's good?
That is, that 13 and a half million is just the building, yes.
Just the building, nothing inside?
Right now, the way that the costs are going up, I would anticipate that that 13 million's going to get the building.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, then on Station 11, the 7 million, do we have land for that or not?
So, we are still trying to negotiate where that land's going to be. There's potential that at one point, that that land was on the Center Point property at one point. I don't know that that is going to be, continue to be that place, but we're still looking at where that property's going to be going.
Okay, so basically, you're asking for 7 million, so it's half the size, all right? It's only 10,000 versus 20,000?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, but we probably ought to add some more to that for land, don't you think? I mean, are we thinking they're going to give it to us?
We're trying to figure out how that land's going to come our way, yes. We could anticipate, yes. If that land is not already taken care of, then we're going to have to add some more to it, yes.
You're going to have to add some more to that?
Yes.
Okay. Then Fire Station 5?
Yes.
That's just tear down, rebuild, or we got land?
No, we won't be building that in the same place that it is.
Okay.
So we'll be looking at a different location, fairly close to where the station is right now. Potential, you know, in that area, potential maybe land swap or something like that, but it's the land for Station 5, I believe we can probably absorb with what we have.
So, but it's another 10,000-square-foot building, so basically 5 and 11 be the same size, same price, same design and everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, but we don't have the land for either one of those, so we're probably going to have to add some more to this.
Potentially, yes.
Well, do we think we should go ahead and do it now or before we approve this? Or, I mean, I'd rather have it over, have enough, and then you guys come back and say we need more. I mean, that's what I'm looking at.
Absolutely. I mean, we would appreciate having, being overfunded in it and give back, rather than having to come back and say, you know, we need more to finish this.
So then my question is, Rick, do we, how we do have them change the price on this or something like that? That got to go? How's that need to go?
I would have to maybe confer with Finance a little bit on that before I can answer that question as to...
Okay, well, Finance wants to come up and answer the question for us, please?
Hi, I'm Melissa Silmes, the Budget Manager.
Okay.
What I would recommend is probably to bring back an amendment at some point then of the CIP plan, just because I don't think that we know what we might need. The other aspect of that is that approving the CIP plan is just step one. Step two will be the actual budget process and approving the dollars.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, I like to see, if you bring it to us, I'd like to see almost the exact amount that it's going to be, and then they come back saying, "Well, we need another million dollars for land." I'm going, "Wait a minute here, that's not what we talked about." So I'd rather have something come to us or come before us so we can say, "Well, we do approve," to go on with that. That's why I asked that question, since you're bringing up surprises when it comes down to finally going before the city council. Well, why is this more than what people talked about? And all of a sudden, now it's more. So that's why I ask, is if we can add to it to make sure, I mean, we're probably saying probably less than 100,000, I think, maybe 300,000, between 100 and 300,000, I think, but I don't know, because I don't know how much land we're going to need.
So, in any amendments, now, I don't know how in the past that you've handled the CIP plan on its own, but if there are any amendments as far as budget goes, that is something that goes to council as an item where we would have to go in and actually amend the CIP budget.
Well, yeah, I understand, yeah.
So there's, yeah, now, I mean, it's how you all like to see it as far as the CIP plan goes. We could, we could do a, do an amendment to the plan, but I think my fear is just because of the way that it's leading up into the budget process, and we have to be able to present the CIP plan to the city council so many days before the budget is passed, that right now, we're up against that type of deadline.
You have to get the time zone, what you're saying.
Yeah, if I would probably recommend, we can always approve it, like if you were to approve it tonight with the recommendation that council continue to look at that as a budget item. And, but again, as was mentioned, again, this is a fluid document. We know it's possibly going to change, and that number may change even from what you might predict.
Well, yeah, we know it's going to change because everything keeps going up. So I, I mean, but I like to get a little bit more closer. I'd rather be over budget than saying, "Okay, now we got extra funds." That's why I like to see the Fire Department at least have enough, because then they're going to be scrambling, saying, "Well, now we can't buy this pumper down here that they want to buy." So I'd rather see that, that we have it in there. That's why I'm asking that question, so...
Yeah, and again, remember this ultimately, this is kind of... Yeah, and, and again, remember this ultimately, this is kind of a document that gives us an ideal as to where the budgets are at, and the council will approve a budget based on what those actual needs are. So, I don't want to get too tied into saying that this is going to be the specific amount, because at the end of the day, we know when these projects do come forward, there's going to more than likely be adjustments up or down for any one of these projects in terms of the budget, so.
Right.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, if I remember in reading, reading the documents, there was a description on most of them, if I remember right, on the two stations that needed to move and needed to either be given or purchase land, there was a statement in there that said land would need to be acquired. So, I think at this stage of it, we're not talking about the specific dollars for those land purchases or exchanges. We are talking about an estimate of getting a fire station built. So, I'm okay with this being the first step, and then looking at step two, maybe that we start narrowing down more and more of the dollars, because I know it's a Herculean task, I really do, so. But that would be my recommendation, if it's not in the written description that land would need to be purchased.
Okay. Do we know if it's in that?
I, I tried to find it quickly, and I couldn't.
And I might add also that, that Station Eight is probably going to be the one that is going to be addressed in this budget year. As we come back next year, and, and again, this, this document is dynamic, as we come back next year, we're probably going to have a more finite number for you for Station Five and Station Eleven. So, Station Eight is, is definitely going to be the one that we're going to be focusing on this budget year. We won't be doing all three of them at the, at the same time.
Oh, I mean, that's why I thought we were doing all three. That's why you have it on here, because that's...
Yeah, this is that, that long-term, long-term plan, so...
They didn't spread it out. On my piece of paper, it's not spread it out. It's all on 24, 25. Is that correct?
I apologize for that. Yeah, this, this, we will not be doing all three stations at the same time. Station Eight's going to be first, and as we're doing Station Eight, getting in the engineering and all of that stuff taken care of, once we break ground and get things going, then we will start the, the engineering process for either Station Five or Station Eleven.
Oh, okay. So, basically, we're moving 23, Station Eleven, Station Five are being moved off to 25, 26 or 26, 27?
More than likely, those, those are going to be out just a little bit further than the, this, this first year. Station Eight will be...
Will you start planning in 24, 25 potentially?
We're going to start planning, yes.
So, that, that's why they're listed in 24, 25.
Okay, so we're planning, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll have our architect identified, first meeting in April, and once we identify that architect, and the April 4th meeting, April 5th, I'm probably going to be making a phone call saying, when can we get started and, and moving forward on this, so.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, it's still in there, but that's okay. As long as we covered up the land problem, we get it in writing about the land on there. Is it down there, Rick?
So, it is not specifically in there, but we could add that to the description.
Could you have that added?
Yeah, I could do that.
Make sure that's added, okay. The fire apparatus aerial, I'm guessing that's just a big?
Yep. It's, that is the...
That's your big one.
That, that is our 100-foot aerial that, that we're going to purchase to replace the aerial that we have, that, that is up for replacement.
Okay. The other pumper trucks I see, are these new, rehabbed, or what?
So, one of, yes, they're both new. Both of those pumbers are new. One, let me see, the, the amount that we have on the, the two, $500,000 there are two separate payments.
Right.
We pay half of it upfront. The one that we have, the single 500,000, is a second payment on the pumper that we had ordered last year. So, that, that will be the second payment.
Okay. I mean, that seems good to me, because I looked online, they said the average pumper truck costs $2 million, and we're only paying $1 million. That's half price. I think that's great.
Yeah, our, our truck companies, our aerials, are about $2 million. They're, they're going up in price.
Okay. I saw, so that, so I guess we got it ordered in time to get it down there, so that sounds good.
Yeah, and the, the engines that are going in them are changing now, and that's going to add about 30 to 40,000, so we, we're getting in under the, under the curtain on that one as well.
Okay. Anybody, one other question, I have this additional parking area over, I guess it's at Station One?
It is.
What's that for?
Yes, so the, the additional parking that we're, we're getting ready to put in the back of Station One is for firefighters. Our firefighters currently are parking in the parking lot at the park or on the street, and we've had several of our firefighters' vehicles that have been vandalized. We actually had one of our firefighters' vehicles that was stolen. So, we're going to actually put a pay parking lot in the back, back behind our prevention office. We're going to have it lit, and it's going to be fenced.
Okay.
So, it's going to create some security and lighting, so that we have that for, for our firefighters.
My question then would be then, on the new fire stations that we're putting up, are we going to be putting fences around their parking areas also, or not? Because I know KNC does that, so I didn't know if Independence is going to start doing that or not.
Yeah, that, it's a security issue that we're always looking at. I mean, it, it doesn't matter where they are, but that's one of the things that we will be looking at as we start to plan out the, the stations, is what all we need to put in to, to the stations to make sure that, that everything's taken care of, secured.
Okay. Well, I was just curious about that, because I was wondering, I mean, that's, I thought the firefighters parked them back, because I've been there for years, I didn't know if that, that, so they were parking over at the park then?
Yeah, at the park, and then, and then on the street, on Spring Street in front of the station.
On Spring Street, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions for fire, guys?
I just have a simple question, mostly because I'm not familiar with this whole process, but I'm assuming that you buy, you have to buy a piece of land, because you can't just shut one station down and build the other one. So, you have to have one operational and then move to the next one.
Yes, that's, logistically, that's what we have to do, is, is to make sure, unless we can find enough property of where we can build one before we raise the other one, you know, so. And that's, that's pretty uncommon to have that much property to be able to, to do that.
Well, that makes sense, but you know, not everything's readily apparent, so.
Sure.
I thought I'd ask that question. Plus, so when the other building, the old building and land is sold, does that go back into your budget, or does that go back into the general fund?
General, that goes back to general fund. Anything that is sold as far as surplus, anything that, that, whether it's apparatus, whether it's vehicles, doesn't matter if it's sold in surplus, it goes back to general fund.
Okay. So, that's not really earmarked to service the debt that has occurred on what you're doing?
That I don't know.
It's just...
Would that be used as for debt service?
Was that like an accounting decision on what you use the money for, or how was that decision made?
I mean, that would, that would be higher than an accounting decision. That would be, once we know that the monies are coming back in, that they would be available to spend on whether it's more fire apparatus, but that wouldn't be something that I or accounting are making from our standpoint. That would be city manager, assistant city manager level. And then also, when an item is sold at surplus, if it's bought from a specific fund, so if it's an item that is bought from, like, their, their fire sales tax, it would go back to the fire sales tax, too.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you all.
Thanks for coming.
You bet.
Okay. What I got next here is health and animal services? Got anybody here for that?
I don't know if we have anybody here for that today.
Okay. The only thing I see is this 5 million for a new building, is that correct? Or what's that for? You know?
That's the G, that, that's just... It was to pay the correct. It's, it's to buy it from the county, right?
I, I'm not 100% sure. So, on the, on the geo bond items, these are just the needs that we know that we have upcoming, and they have been identified as potential projects that would happen if the public does approve the geo bond when it goes out for a vote on that particular project. I'm, I'm not exactly sure of the specifics on it, but we could certainly find out and get back to you on that.
Well, I mean...
To let you know if it's a new building or for purchasing from the county.
They're saying it's for purchasing the old buildings, but...
That's correct. That's what I heard, too.
Okay. Okay. That's the only question I have about that. Okay. Any other questions on that, guys? Okay. Municipal services? I mean, I'm going down my list, that sound about right? I mean, I mean, I'm not, that's the list we got here.
My name's Rich Kempel. I'm the Deputy Director of Municipal Services.
Okay. Any questions, guys?
Can you speak to the right closer?
Sure.
I set it down one level if you want to.
Yeah.
Is the, you're making up the athletics center, is that?
Is that municipal services?
I believe that's parks, correct?
Yes, I believe that one's parks.
That's parks, okay.
Anybody else have questions?
Well, it is, Vice Chair, municipal is obviously the largest budget piece.
It's sizable, yes.
Yes, it, it has the most projects. One of the things that I was really, a little shocked by, and maybe this is more of a question back to the actual putting together of this, was that, for example, there was one project that was to purchase a dump already scoring a 25, for example, or 30, something really low. And so, I started looking at some of the projects, and there were a few that were 70s and above from a scoring, but most of them kind of ran in that mid-range, 50s, 60s. And I was really curious as to why we didn't do prioritizing based on those numbers, especially with the volume of needs in the municipal budget. So, any thoughts there? Because several times it was mentioned, this is not a priority list, it is a list.
No, I, I was not involved with prioritizing any of the projects. Specifically for the dump truck, we do have a dump truck that currently works. It's 18 years old, it's beds worn out. We can limp it along for another year if we have to, you know, so it's, it's not like a dire need, but it would certainly be helpful to get rid of that old dump truck and get a new one in.
Well, I guess my, my point is, is that a dump truck that's 18 years old, that's, let's, I'll use my own words, falling apart, let's say, and so, it'd be okay for this year, but next year, we absolutely have to have it. I'm shocked to hear that it's rated so low, that it's a 25 on kind of the rating priority. So, my question once again is, I would really like to see, because there are so many projects in municipal, to really prioritize based on those ratings, what is the most critical needs? And to me, if you're going to have a dump truck or not going to have a dump truck, because it's 18 years old, does that not make it a higher priority? It might only be $100,000 or $200,000, but it's still a high need. I, I'm not saying it is, I'm just using that as an example. So, any thought as to not prioritizing based on those rankings?
I'll, I'll try to answer that a bit, and again, you know, we've started using the priority-based budgeting, and when you start looking at the, the things involved in the priority-based budgeting, it'll talk about things like how many population are served by it, for example, but it also has other, how does that relate to the community, whether or not, you know, does this, how does it affect health and safety, for example, sometimes? And so, when we're putting this together, and I'm not saying that it's a perfect, that's why I said in the beginning, you know, I hate to call it a score, because any project, even something like a dump truck versus a fire truck, I mean, they're all very important. And, you know, I always use the example of, you may have a sanitary sewer in a neighborhood that's backing up, and it may only affect a dozen people, but to that people, that's their entire world, right? But it doesn't necessarily infect the other 120-some-odd-thousand people in Independence. And so, they're still very important, but how did it really fit into the budget, and how does that really fit into the scoring that we have? I'm not going to say it's perfect, I'm sure, you know, there are ways we can tweak things, but, you know, we're, we're trying to do the best we can to, to fit these projects in based on the scoring mechanisms that we have. And if I understand right, I mean, this is a, I don't want to call it a national, but this is, the priority-based budgeting isn't something that just, we just come up with. I mean, this is a standardized type of scoring, and so, I mean, maybe that helps answer some of that question, how we get to some of those numbers.
Are any of those scorings, are they weighted the same, or are they weighted differently? Like, are certain questions more important than others?
Well, I think it depends on, it really kind of depends on when they're putting the actual project in, how they perceive that based on the questions, because it basically, they're asking, they're answering a series of questions that determines that priority, I guess, if you want to call it that.
And I know you're, you're the Deputy Director here, so it may be that you would not know the answer to this, but one of the terms that was really stuck out to me was the estimated service life. So, if I looked at that, and there were many projects that were past their prime, so to speak, they were already expired, that estimated service life, to me, that would be a really high priority then. I mean, it's kind of like, if you need to get to job in a car, and your car is on its last leg, then you better worry about that, or you're going to lose a job, and then life, you know, just kind of goes bad. So, so my question was, looking at all the municipal projects, do you, I guess internally, is there a list of priorities based on that estimated service life? If you have $10, and, you know, what's the most important thing to spend that $10 on? I guess that's where all my questions kind of lie.
I think you might be referring to the vehicle replacement program that I know.
Well, basically, with project, with project service life, we, like, as you said, we have many of them that are past their prime. We, we inspect and, and maintain those, those projects and determine which one is going to fail, or try to determine which one's going to fail first and worst, right? So, you know, if I've got, if I've, for instance, we've, we've got lots of corrugated metal pipe out in the system, all of it's in, in pretty rough shape, right? If it's out in the field in the middle of nowhere, it might fail just as quickly as this one in the neighborhood, but that one in the neighborhood's going to be more effect, it's going to affect more people, and it's going to create a larger hazard. So, that one's going to go up to the top of the list of one of the things that we, we try to take care of first, right? So, there, there is a, there is an internal mechanism where we try to determine which project needs to be the priority within, within our department, based on, on how quickly we think it's going to fail, how badly it's going to fail, how badly it's going to affect services when it fails, right? So, there's several, several metrics we use to try to, to try to set these priorities. I like to think we get them right most of the time, sometimes we don't.
No, that's, that's really good to hear, because I wanted to make sure there was some kind of internal mechanism, not just this list, but that you're also prioritizing.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On that same aspect, though, I'm just going to bring up an example of one here, the Woodbury and 25th Street South. How long's that been on the books?
Um, I don't know.
I can tell, it's been on it for over 20 years. At first, it was going to cost $40,000. Now, you got it at $500,000. What, why are we keep kicking this one down the can? I mean, there's several of them probably like this, and I don't understand why we keep kicking them down the road.
Without knowing exactly what that project is for, without flipping through my notes, I would say there are probably other projects that have impacted public services worse than that one, and so we moved it down.
I know, it's a storm sewer drain that's probably bad, because it floods people's backyards. I heard about, we heard about it here, and then, and like I say, they said it's been on the books for over 20 years, but it's never got fixed, and I'm see, now it's on here, last I heard it was $100,000, you guys are asking $500,000, it must've grown to a bigger project.
I can probably answer a little bit of that. So, initially, if you recall, we did have a developer that wanted to do some work over there, and we had done our best to try to work with them to do some kind of cost share, because obviously they were gonna have an impact. That did not come to fruition, which is, you know, I can't necessarily speak to the past, you know, 20 years ago, or whatever, but we had, that one actually has been kind of on the, on the priority list, and that project did bring it up, but when that kind of fell through, it really kind of came, became more of just a municipal services project at that point. And, I do believe the project actually kind of grew, in terms of what the actual problem was. It wasn't necessarily just an isolated pipe, and it was more of an area, so I think that kind of answers that question.
That answers my, that answers one part of that question, my question, and then also be, how many more of these projects have we been kicking down the road? How, I mean, there's no year thing on here, because we can't go back how long they've been on here. I don't know if there's any way to tell that or not, because, I mean, some of them been on here for five or 10 years, we gotta see, why aren't we stepping these up and getting them taken care of? And I'm see, there's people out there probably know about them, I don't know about them, I don't know if our Deputy Director knows about them.
Well, we have, we have several projects planned out for many, many years, we know there's failures, we rate, so, in the stormwater system, we have roughly about 90 miles of corrugated metal pipe, right? It's all failing.
Right.
It's $200 million to fix it.
$200 million to fix that, wow.
$200 million to fix it. It's not gonna happen this year. I know it's failing, but I can't do it all this year, so we have to prioritize projects and move them out, based on, for stormwater, generally a project is based on structural flooding, and how many houses it's getting into, so, we will, before we're worried about a field flooding, or somebody having nuisance flooding in their yard, we're gonna take care of flooding in somebody's house, right? Or something that's flooding a roadway, right? So that's, that's how we try to juggle these projects. We do have a lot of projects, and there is, there is definitely a funding gap, right? It just, it's the nature, it's the nature of cities all over America. So, we don't like to kick them down the road, we wanna get them done as quickly as possible. Kicking them down the road costs us time and effort to continue band-aiding them, and fielding calls, and taking care of other issues, right, that are associated with it. But, what we're trying to do is take care of projects and failures that are in the system that are affecting the most people the worst, okay? So, particularly Woodbury, let's see, I don't see that there's any structural flooding happening there, it's just flooding that happens occasionally, which, which is not something we want, but I know that the projects that we are currently doing in the stormwater system, all of them involve people's houses flooding, so they are gonna get precedent, and that's why we move them out. It's not, it's not because we don't wanna do it, it, a lot of times it's because...
I know you don't wanna do it, it's all about the budget, about the money, it's all about the money. I just wanna make sure that we got enough in our budget, and do we have a line item for stormwater drainage, since we need to spend 200 million, is there a line item for each year to add to a fund, so that we can do that?
Well, we have the, we have the stormwater sales tax in place, and we have the Stormwater Oversight Committee who oversees how that sales tax is spent, and, and yes, we do, we do several million dollars a year in storm projects, so, we did...
But is that a line item in the budget here, or not?
They come, no, it's not a single line item, they come out as...
It's not like the sewer main, I mean, the main replacement water, so we don't have something like that, do we need to have something like that set up, is what I'm saying?
No, most of those are coming out as neighborhood projects, kind of like this Woodbury at East 25th, they come out that way, there's not like a line item where we're doing, we do have like a trenchless technology line item...
I saw that.
In the storm, and that's where we go in and line some of the sewer, or some of the storm lines to fix that failures.
Oh, okay, I thought that was water mains, or something like that.
We have, we have trenchless technology for water mains where we bore lines in, we have trenchless technology for sewer mains where we go in and line sewers, and we have trenchless technology in storm pipe where we go in and line the storm pipe, so, it is in all three of those budget lines, but most of, most of the, most of the stormwater stuff that we have out there is specific to a, to a neighborhood or a failure that's happening, whereas, like, we have a main replacement for the water...
Water line, right.
Distribution, right? Well, the main replacement, we know that there are mains out there failing, we go in every year, we look at which ones are causing the most water breaks, or have issues with them, and we determine what mains we're gonna replace. We don't, we don't have anything like that on the stormwater side.
Do you think we should, though? That's what I'm asking you.
Our stormwater manager has not set one of those up, and he is a long-term engineer who is well-known for his ability to deal with stormwater and take care of stormwater. He's set up the program that we have. I would not necessarily want to say that an engineer doesn't know what he's doing when I'm not an engineer, so...
I'm just, I mean, I'm not either, but I'm saying, it makes more sense if we make a line item for stormwater repairs or replacements, sound like replacements is what we need to do, if we're up to 200 million. I'm sorry, Rick, I know I'm going on, but I mean...
No, I'm an engineer, so...
I'm just saying, it sounds like we need to have something like that set up in a budget, that, for capital improvements for stormwater, if we got $200 million worth of stormwater, that needs to be replaced. Sound like to me, we need a budget item for that.
Mr. Vice Chair, sorry, I just, we have a role in this, but it's not budget.
Right.
Am I right?
Correct.
It's not budget.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm just saying what I think.
We, we do projects, and we set up projects in the stormwater budget, right? So we set up projects to attack two different things, places where we're having known failures, and places where we need to add stormwater to take care of issues that are affecting multiple people, right? So, that's the way we develop projects. We do eventually wanna get through the projects, and hopefully that will happen, where we can start actually budgeting something to take care of those pipes. We're not to that point yet. We would like to have that in the future, but right now, the vast majority of the money that we're spending on our stormwater side is specifically for stormwater issues in neighborhoods, and so we're lining, we're doing projects in, like, neighborhood projects, right, to take care of large problems. The stormwater operations guys, they go out and maintain the stormwater, and in their operating budget, they have money to replace pipes that have, that are, you know, yeah, smaller sections of pipe that's failed, they're not gonna do, they're not gonna go in and replace several miles of pipe, but they'll do a couple hundred feet to get a, to get a pipe replaced, so...
Yeah, that's fine.
We are doing pipe replacements, and part of the ARPA funds that we requested was to do specifically pipe replacement over an older section of town, over in the Rock Creek Drainage Area, where we do have significant issues. So, we are looking at, at the pipe in general as well, but mostly the budget for the stormwater side is developed to take care of neighborhood problems.
Okay.
Okay? Does that, does that answer your question?
We got the questions answered, yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Any other questions, before I go to my next one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may. The dump truck that you're talking about, as it's projected out over the next years, there's still that line item in there, which, I'm assuming you're not gonna buy a dump truck every year, right? Or are you? Is it just for a general kind of equipment that you're looking to replace?
There is, we definitely try to replace equipment on a, on a yearly basis, as it's needed.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
I don't think we would necessarily need a dump truck every year in perpetuity, no.
Well, you bought, you bought like seven of them one time, at a time, didn't we, eight, or was it 12 of them?
That was, yes, that was the street department that needed to replace many of their dump trucks, that they had all gone well beyond their usable life, and so we just bought a big chunk at one time. This is a sanitary sewer department dump, dump truck, or sewer division dump truck. They have three large dump trucks and two small ones, so I, I mean, the most we would need to replace is three, but I, I'm not, that operation doesn't actually fall under me, so I'm not certain how many dump trucks they need to replace, but I would not expect us to have to replace many of them in a row.
Well, that's a pretty good answer. I don't necessarily need the accountant to come up and explain that, but I just didn't know how many trucks, I'm assuming that the 18-year-old truck is the oldest truck in the fleet?
It's the oldest one in the sanitary fleet, I can't, I don't know about the other ones, yeah.
Well, okay, so, the trenchless technology line item is mostly for the liners that you're putting in there, or is there a piece of equipment that you also need to replace every once in a while?
No, we have, we do have, so there's a couple different ways we do trenchless technology. For lining a, a large length of pipe, we have Ace Pipe come in and do a felt liner, right? For that, that's all just on Ace Pipe. We also have what's called a carrier, or a packer, that is a smaller piece of equipment where we can do six and eight-inch lines, that's more for point repairs. That one, I don't know what the life on that piece of equipment is, we've had it for about three or four years, the fiberglass sleeve that goes on it that we inflate and use to repair the line is about $3,000 for that, but it reduces our cost. When we first put it in pla, well, they might be more than $3,000 now, but when we first put it in place, that liner was $3,000, and we bought those in the operational budget, and it was costing us roughly about $7,000 to actually dig the pipe up and do the repair, so, every repair we were doing was, was saving us like 50% of the cost of digging up. So that one, that packer, I'm not sure what its life is, we've had it for about five years, it's a hard rubber thing that inflates, so I'm sure it has some usable life to it, but I'm not positive what it is.
Okay, I just, well, he's just wanna know, is that trenchless, then, is that just for parts?
Well, no, well, yes, it was just for the material you used to line with, or it also includes the equipment that you have to use?
No, the, for the trenchless line item here, and I'm sorry, I got sidetracked on you guys, for the, for the trenchless line item here, we use that solely for paying for companies to come in and do a project for us, where they, where they actually line the pipe, so, most of that goes to the projects we do with Ace to put in felt liners, so, and we don't do anything for parts, there, there's, yeah, there's nothing but a project cost for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Another question I have, the yard truck, what's that for?
The yard truck?
I mean, I don't know, is it a dump truck, a half-ton truck?
No, it's a...
One-ton truck?
It is a smaller truck for the sewer plant, I'm not certain, but it's, it's for them to use around the plant to put, put heavier items in, like small pumps and stuff, so they can move them around the plant more easily, and from lift stations to the plant. I am trying to find the yard truck slide, I'm not sure what its size is.
It's page 23, and I'll pack it there. I'm completely, let's see here.
So, well, my question is...
Mr. Chair, this is Mike Jackson.
Hey, Mike.
Hi, this is Mike Jackson, deputy, other, one of the other Deputy Directors for the Municipal Services Department. On the yard truck, just wanted to jump in real quick, that is a kind of form of a semi to move a, the big trailers we have for our bio solids around the plant, so we found in the last few months, when we started doing our land applying of our bio solids, that occasionally, depending on the weather conditions, our contractor can't make it in in time to pull these trailers out, and we have no ability to move them ourselves with our current trucks, so this was just to have one of those. We were gonna, we were putting it off until the next budget year, or 25, I believe, 26, 25, 26, because we wanted to just try it for one more year to see if we could somehow make it work without purchasing that, so that's kind of on our wish list at this point. We'll reevaluate next year to determine if we need it or not.
Okay, thank you, that answered my question, I was wondering if it was a semi, or just a half-ton truck? Thank you. One other question for you guys, how many engineers do we have in our city, that works for the city?
I'm not sure how many engineers we have for, in the city, there's other departments that have engineers.
Well, in Municipal Services, how many engineers do we have?
Do you have three? I think it's six? Six.
Now, do we know what they are, are they, I'm guessing they're all civil engineers, or electrical, or mechanical?
For Municipal Services, they are all civil engineers.
They're all civil engineers, okay, 'cause I mean, a lot of these projects are for, I'm trying to find the exact one, is to go out and do a scope and check out bridges. I mean, can our engineers not do that, or do we have to hire somebody to do that?
In general, the civil engineering world is a very, very, has a very broad scope. If we had a structural or a bridge engineer, we could do that, but I don't think we have any engineers in-house that, that have specialized in bridge or structural engineering.
So that's, that's the reason why we gotta outsource them, because of specially civil engineers?
Yes.
Okay, that answered my question, there.
I can add to that, that, bridge engineering, typically you'll see those at state DOTs, because you have to have so many years of experience of actual bridge inspection, and really nothing that we typically do here at the city would qualify any of our engineers to be able to do that unless they work for a DOT.
Okay, gotcha, thank you. My next question's gonna be, it's gonna be for streets.
Wait a second.
Oh, go ahead.
You don't get all the questions. Do we have a lagoon somewhere around here, or is that just a general term for a lagoon cleanup? Rick?
I think you're, you're talking about like the sewer, like a sewer?
I'm just talking about 401402, lagoon cleanup.
Oh, is that part of the...
That's on the table.
Okay, Matt's gonna take this one.
I thought you had this memorized, right? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Hello, my name's Matt McGlaugh, I'm another Deputy Director for Municipal Services, I can field the lagoon question. Lagoon, lagoon cleaning is actually at our water plant, drinking water plant, it receives our backwash water from our filter cleaning process, that saves us over a million gallons of water a day by running that water to our lagoons, we then can reclaim that and run it back to the treatment process. Those lagoons get filled up over time with our softening residuals, and so they're needing to be dredged or cleaned out to return them back to their original elevation, so, that's what that process is. We take one down every three to four years, we've got three of them actually, and we do that on a rotating basis, so they're probably cleaned once every 10 years or so, each, each one is, is that, but that's on a routine basis.
When that's cleaned out, do you provide that to, like, farmers, or somebody that wants to...
Yes, the softening residuals is agricultural grade, where we can pH, provide pH balance and control for agricultural fields, and the company that we hire, we require them to, our permit is, from the DNR, is a land application permit, so it's, it's a beneficial reuse, as far as that goes as well.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
While you're still there, on the nutrient removal, that's mandatory, is that correct, coming through the federal government, is that correct?
The...
Neutral removal?
Nutrients.
That's back to wastewater?
Yeah, bio-nutrient removal is something that we've been keeping a line item for, we're expecting that that will eventually be a mandate by Missouri DNR, it's already been put in places in some other states, and it's being pushed by the federal EPA, but it hasn't, it hasn't hit us yet, but we're keeping that in, in the budget, so that when it does hit us, and it will eventually hit us, we'll have some money saved up to do it.
Well, I'm see, we keep pushing it off, I know we had it last year, and we pushed it off again, so that's why I'm trying to ask, I remember that item being there last year, and it was like 25, and now it's off to 26, and when we keep moving it...
Yeah, we're gonna keep moving it until they make us do it, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm wondering if we're gonna try for a grant, or something on it too, maybe, I didn't know.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Mike Jackson again, let me jump in there real quick. Right now, based on our, the size of our, our plant, at our roughly seven million gallons per day, the, the expected date of them requiring the phosphorus removal will be around 2036. When we, last year when we put this in here, and even the year before, we didn't know any dates, we just knew it was coming up, so we're fairly comfortable with pushing that out a few more, a few more years.
Okay, then, thank you, well, at least we got a date. Okay, thanks. Okay, anything else for sewer, or water, or any other questions? Okay, now let's go to streets. I see right now, we got our overlay that you guys are hoping the GO bond will do, is that correct? Mike, I'm guessing you probably don't answer that?
I'm actually gonna defer to Matt on this one, specifically.
We're actually, well, we're currently doing overlay every year, but with the GO bond money, we're hoping... money, we're hoping to increase the amount that we can do essentially and get a jump on, you know, right now we're trying to maintain and improve as much as we can, but again, we only have so much budget to stretch, and that's what we're trying to do with the seals and the other items that we're doing as well. So trying to make the best use of our funds as we can.
When I read this, it said for 376 miles, is that correct? That's the whole city or is that a third of the city or?
I believe that's about, that's not even a third if I can, I'm trying to remember how many lane miles, 1,600 is that?
I think we have about 1,200-ish.
Okay, so about a fourth of it.
Right.
So basically, this overlay said it was supposed to do 360-some lane miles. I don't know if you can find that, for us, Rick, 26, 600, 6,000? Is that a page number we can look at?
For the project?
Yeah, for the project. What I'm questioning here is that we're asking for $60 million for 300 mi, 350 miles of lane miles. I looked out there on the internet, it said the average lane mile to resurface it is $56,000. So if you multiply that out, we're only upward about $20 million. Why are we asking for $60 million? Well, that's my question is. I mean, if we're going 60 million, we better be going for almost the whole entire city overlay if we're at 1,200 miles.
Is that the cost of the material or is that the cost of material and labor?
I Googled how much to overlay asphalt and it said 56,000.
It's page 80.
Okay, well, I would think the material would be that much.
I don't know, I'm just saying that's what I Googled, so I don't know if that's right or not. That's why I like to know. Well, I'm just asking the question. I mean, do you guys know?
I don't have an answer for you on that right now. I apologize. What we're trying to do, and I guess maybe to back up is so that what we're saying is we need to catch up. I'm not sure of the numbers. I don't have the math in front of me to answer that question exactly.
I'm on the street commission, so I hear you guys' stuff. And we spent $8 million last year and supposedly we only did maybe 15 miles? That seems, but that 8 million's also used for capital improvement projects too. So I'm just saying, but people were expected when they voted for the street tax, is probably to see streets fixed, not just capital improvement projects. So I'm saying we have a little problem there that we need to look into and try to get this addressed.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
I'm looking at page 80 for street. It is 27 million over the next five years, six years, but it also includes lots of additional things besides just street overlay.
Okay.
It's some curbs, it's entrance ramps, ceiling.
They got other ones in here for sidewalks, other line items.
Yeah, curbs are not sidewalks. So what this description says, it clearly says adding texture, appearance, sealing cracks, resurfacing coating. So this looks in line with that amount.
What page was that?
Page 80.
Sorry, we are getting sidetracked, sidetracked again on something that is not what we do. I think if you have questions about the GO bond, you should direct them to the city manager.
Okay. Well, then my question's gonna be on to the, let's see, no, that's, so the rest of these have been taken off to the next year. Neighborhood projects, 302, 004, that's, looks like we're putting money out there each one. Is that just to put aside for if we need to do projects in neighborhoods?
The neighborhood projects are, those are continuing, like what Rich was talking about earlier, that's a way that we're doing basically sewer improvements in neighborhoods. We'll group, we've got several small projects in a neighborhood, say, and we'll group them together and use that money to make those improvements.
So basically, this is for maybe storm waters?
This is actually more for sanitary.
For sanitary, okay, so sanitary.
And I wanted to back up, I think there was a question on dump trucks.
Yeah.
There's two line items that are actually dump trucks. One is for streets and one is for sanitary sewer. The sanitary sewer line only has one year that we have a dump truck purchased in it. So just in case there was a confusion there, I wanted to clear that up.
I did see two of them, so okay, that helps that, yeah.
Yeah, streets, yes, we have to do more every year, basically.
Okay. On down the list, it says maintenance and it's 150,000. You skip two years, then you go to 250,000. I don't know what the maintenance is for. Is that just for maintenance on vehicles? Is that what we're doing? Capital improvement projects for? 302, 103.
What was the full name of that?
Maintenance, all it says on here.
Just spec maintenance?
That's why, that's why I questioned it. All it does is say maintenance. It doesn't say what for.
I believe that one refers to the pump stations improvements and maintenance.
Okay.
If you see, if it's the one I'm looking at.
Well, it could be.
302, 103.
Yeah, that's for pump stations.
Okay.
It's pump station slash or hyphen improvements in maintenance is the total if you read that, that title.
That particular one is for us to do maintenance on, maintenance and equipment replacement on the pump stations out there, so.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just going off the piece of paper. See, it's kind of vague on the piece of paper I have, it just says maintenance. That's like the next one on down, it just says improvements for 800,000.
Yeah, I think we, it's called pump station improvements and maintenance on this.
The improvements one is actually sludge thickening process improvements.
So what, what is it?
Sludge thickening process improvements.
Okay, okay, whatever that is, I'm sure you guys know.
We have, we have two dissolved air flotation pieces of equipment that basically they bring our solids up to about 3% to 4%. They're at this point almost 50 years old. We're starting to get rust, rust is starting to significantly impact the tanks on those, so we need to look at replacing those.
Okay. Now, the camera truck, is that just for camera and lines? We're gonna need to replace the truck?
Yes.
Okay. So we are talking about the wells. What's the 750,000 rehab? 402, 501.
Could you say that number?
402, 501.
501, 402, 501. Oh, that's horizontal collector well rehab. The horizontal collector well, it's our largest well at the drinking water plant. It's just a rehabilitation on that.
The spring branch, are we gonna go with that this year or are we gonna kick it down the road again?
The...
The complex?
The, so the complex, we are, that's gonna be an expensive complex. We're not kicking it down the road, we're saving money for it. So we do, we...
I mean, we got a total of $10 million. I don't know if that's the whole project or not.
No.
No, okay. That's a good answer.
It is not.
Okay. So, I mean, I know Lisa said we need one badly. I've been over to the places, we do need one badly, trying to figure out why we're not doing it.
We actually are working on it right now. We have, we have an engineering firm who is working on the need, right? So we're in the process of doing the need study to find out exactly what size of building, how much parking, how many vehicle parking stalls, et cetera, et cetera, that we're gonna need for the entire complex. But it is, it's...
So this 5 million helps to pay for the designs costs and all that stuff, correct?
Well, it will help pay for that, but the design is not gonna be, the design's not gonna be...
No, I know it's not 5 million, but that we have to have a budget, like she said, so we can get it started.
Yes.
Or have we have it in the past already budgeted?
I think this is the second year we've been putting money aside for it. So it's, it's gonna be an expensive project.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions for these guys?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so what do we got going on now? Parks and Rec? You don't have much. Yeah, he's got parks a lot.
Good evening, Morris Heidi, Director of Parks Recreation and Tourism. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Well, you don't have much for this year.
Correct?
Why are we not doing historic site maintenance this year?
That's in our operating budget. This is capital, anything over $100,000.
So, you know, that's, because like, from here on out, you're asking for too many a year. That's why I don't understand why we're not asking for it this year.
That's part of the GO bond. If you look at page...
Okay.
If you look at page 14, starting with the fourth item on down, all of those are GO bond projects.
Gotcha, okay, that's, that makes...
Yep, and the title...
This piece of paper doesn't say GO.
For the, for the project number?
Oh, and the number, oh, is that what that? Okay, gotcha. Okay, any other questions?
Vice Chair?
Yeah.
So, I live really close to the athletic center. I never see anybody there. My question is, $100,000 isn't a crazy amount to overlay a parking lot, but I don't like spending money that we may not need in the future. When the GO bond passes and we build a beautiful community center, do you anticipate that the athletic center would be one of those things that we put up for sale?
The athletic complex?
Yeah.
That's not anticipated at this point. I mean, anything can certainly happen. I would just mention, you know, we just opened the first of March for activities, so, you know, through the winter time, there's not a lot of activity there, obviously. The challenge at that facility is the, the streets, the parking lots have not had any work done since, I believe that was built in 2007.
Okay.
So it's, it's just, you know, maintenance that needs to be done, similar to street maintenance, et cetera, so.
Okay, just wanted to know. And then, do you have any numbers? You presented us with something before about numbers, but how many citizens are using the athletic complex?
Oh, as far as participants?
Yeah.
I don't have those numbers in front of me tonight, but we certainly, yes, we try to track all our statistics and provide that through our back to basics information to the city, to the city manager's office. So we have details like participation, participation in programs and events, that type thing, but I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, thank you.
One question I have, I see that you're asking for another athletic complex. Where would that be located?
Another athletic complex?
It's in the GO bond.
No, Rec Center.
No, there's not, there's another $5 million for athletic center. Yeah, 27 GO.
I believe that's to upgrade the athletic baseball.
No, revitalize.
Are you talking about the 5 million line there? So, yeah, those are improvement, site improvements. Again, the athletic complex was constructed in 2006, 2007, that neighborhood. Site amenities, restroom improvements, you know, things need improvement over time, so...
Okay, so that's what basically the 1 and the 5 million is for those then?
No, the 1 million, you referring to the 1 million above that? That's for George Owens. George Owens Nature Park Revitalization.
Okay, that's just for George Owens, okay.
Title wraps text, so...
I mean, it's on down the road. I just, I was just curious, I thought, well, we're gonna build another park, she's asking about, it's not used that much, and I'm going, I'm sure it's used, I mean...
Yeah, the athletic complex is typically weekends mostly, but we have practices and they're gearing up for spring ball, that type thing. And I should mention too, everything again that's GO related, that is coming from our 2010 Parks Master Plan, so those are all projects that were identified, you know, many years ago that we have not been able to find funding for, so...
Okay, that sounds good to me, I appreciate it. Any other questions?
I only have one, future planning. GO bond passes, we improve so many things, we bring so many people to our city, tourism goes crazy. From a future planning, community improvement, is there an area that we have not addressed in your opinion that should be on something like this, so for looking five, six years down the road of a need to accommodate so many more people?
Well, I'd answer that this way. So the, actually, the 2010 Parks Master Plan called for additional parks on the east side of the city, so in the valley, basically. I think you're all aware with the North Point development, there is that parcel that they're gonna, you know, I think it's phase three or phase two, I can't recall. So adding park amenities in that area, that's, that's been a known issue for many years, so improvements like that. The other factor, you mentioned tourism, having facilities and part of that may be focused once we determine the recreation center component, sports tourism activities. IAC unfortunately doesn't have enough ball fields to really have big tournaments. Everything we have is just kind of, you know, not large enough scale, so certainly something we're aware of and hopefully we can address in the future with improvements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One question here, since you're asking about future projects. I know, like Lee Summit, they all have these little parks setting around for individual communities. How many of those do we have out there that can really, that we, that we know of?
So are you referring to like a neighborhood park?
Yeah, neighborhood parks.
So we have 50 total parks in this, in the park system for the city. The majority of those are what we'd refer to as neighborhood parks, pocket parks. That was kind of the park design style of, you know, 30, 40, 50 years ago. Typically today, what you see is more regional parks like Milcoy, Mill Creek, McCoy Park, you know, a community center, it's more of a destination park. So that's kind of, that's, that's the difference. That's really where we want to go to. So we do have neighborhood...
See, that's where you want to go to, but I'm seeing Lee Summit, they have all these, now, I don't know if it's homeowners associations doing them, I don't know, but they're, they're nice looking, grandkids go there. So I'm saying they're nice and they're like brand new, so I'm trying to figure out if it's the City Lee Summit doing it or if it's a homeowner's thing.
So I, actually, I used to work for the City Lee Summit. A lot of those are HOA actual parks or, or community, you know, HOA, community supported areas, like with a pool and, and those type things, so...
These don't have pools, these are just playgrounds, all there was, so...
Yep, some, I believe some of those are as well, but...
Okay, that answered my question, thank you. Anything else, guys? Okay, nothing else for parks?
All right, thank you.
Okay, power and light.
My name's Joe Hegendafer, I'm the Director of Power and Light.
All right, Vice Chair?
Yes.
Okay, this is the big question I've been waiting on.
Okay.
So, the budget, 60 million. We have, currently have a study out, keep IPL, sell IPL. We don't know what that study's gonna show, we don't know what decision's gonna be made. Once again, as I said earlier, I hate spending money when everything may change.
Okay.
So, is there required money that needs to be spent? And is there things that should come off the list after that study?
So my answer to that would be absolutely not. The stuff that you see in this capital project would need to be built whether IPL owned it, whether Evergy owned it, whether an IOU owned it, no matter who owns us. These projects help promote the growth on the east side of town, so North Point and all these projects are continuing to maintain the current system that we have and any upgrades that, that are needed there. So I would say that that study is totally separate from what this capital project spells out, and these would need to be done no matter who's in the driver's seat.
Thank you, I wanted that in the record, so you answered correctly.
Thanks, I'm done, right?
No, thank you.
Any questions on specific projects?
Well, I don't know that much about, no, I know about electricity, but all these projects looks like they need to be done because we gotta get the power going.
Absolutely.
My question's gonna be, how about for this, if it goes through on Nolan Road, the electric, electricity, they might need to do electric vehicle charging. I don't know how many stations they'll try to put in, I have no idea. Is that something we can handle down there or is that gonna have to have another substation down there?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that until they come to the drawing board with me and give me the actual load that they're looking to utilize there. I would need to do a study in that area on our distribution system to see if we can handle it or I need another sub. To, I haven't been, I don't have the information in front of me on the specifics for the Wally's gas station is what I'm assuming you're speaking of.
Correct.
So, yeah, I don't have the information. I need, I need them to come to me with information so that I can do a study and find out.
Okay, say, just say, looking five years down the road here, how many upgrades would we have to do to get electric vehicle charging stations throughout the city? Would there be a lot or do you think our system can handle it?
Well, I mean, so that's a, that's a kind of a big theoretical question. Well, I mean, so that's a, that's a kind of a big theoretical question.
It is a big broad, yes.
And really it needs to be specified of each area.
So you need to know purge zone.
I would need to know exactly where chargers are going. So, so let me, let me give you an example. Bass Pro Shop, right?
Okay.
They had those Tesla chargers there at the Bass Pro Shops, right?
Correct, yes.
We provided the electricity. We did not own those chargers.
Right.
Those are owned by Tesla. They upgraded and added more chargers and we had to put in a bigger transformer there for them, right? We did not have to upgrade the distribution system per se in the area. It could handle it at that time, but we did have to get a larger transformer just to handle the, the larger number of chargers. So each time specifics like that are asked, we have to do an engineering, electrical, engineering study on our distribution system to see what it can handle and what kind of added. So each house, each business, when they want to add those things, we, we do a study and it goes through the planning process.
Then my question's going to be, the transformers, do we, city has to pay for them or do people that want the chargers have to pay for them?
So, so in the, let's talk about Tesla, for example, right?
Right.
That is a city-owned transformer that we purchased. Now, we get our return on money off of the rates that are charged for the electricity through those.
Okay, so that's how we get our money back through the rates on those?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That, that, that sounds fair. I was just curious how our grid would be if they wanted to come in with a big multi thing down there at Nolan Road. So, but we don't know because they haven't seen anything yet.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I need to know specifics before I can engineer anything or, or say what I can handle.
Okay. Any other questions for electric? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Technologies, they don't even have anything out there. So, Jason, you're not asking for any money?
Hello, I'm Jason Nicker, Technology Services Director.
Okay.
And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, it doesn't look like you're asking for anything this year. You're wanting everything next year?
Um, no.
No?
Well, I'm not, not building out anything here. So we've got three projects on there.
Right.
Data center, two security related projects. None of them need replaced this year. But yeah, so we're, we're planning for the future, basically.
Okay, so you are planning for the future, that's why. Would it be more reasonable to ask for smaller amounts over a longer period of time or do you still want everything all at once?
So, I mean, when you build out a data center, you have to build out the data center. So it's all at once. However, from a budgeting standpoint, we are budgeting small amounts each year so that when we reach the date of replacement that-
Okay, so basically like say the first line, the checkpoint, the 740,000, you've already budgeted the past couple of years and you're coming up to that for it?
Yeah, absolutely. These have been capital improvement project, or not capital improvements, capital outlay projects in the past. This was redefined this year. So the technology projects were brought into capital improvement projects. And so that's why I'm here for the, the first time. But yes, we've been saving for this.
Okay, so that, that makes sense. Okay, I appreciate that somebody's saving up for projects coming ahead. Okay.
Absolutely.
Vice Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I think one thing we all know-
Yeah.
Is that technology grows and changes yearly by minute. So is there anything that you, because of your knowledge, your expertise, that the city is severely lacking of in the word technology that we currently don't even have on our map, that we're not even thinking about, but that we should be?
Yeah. I, I mean, I, I would like to say that we, we have forecasted as well as we possibly could. You know, most of our, our initiatives are built into operational budget. And so that's, that's where they're, they're at every year. The, what we've got on here, the three projects, they're continuations of things that we've done in the past. Like I said, two of them are security. And, and really from, from my standpoint, like that's, that's kind of thing number one, is making sure that any of our operations are, are meeting, you know, the, the proper security protocols and that we don't, you know, we're minimizing risk so that we don't suffer events that could be catastrophic to operations within the city. So that's why those are on there. No, I mean, I don't, I don't really have any, any major concerns about anything. I think that, you know, over the last five years or so, the city's really made a major shift and started prioritizing these projects because everything that all the other departments do are dependent upon technology infrastructure. And so we're, I think we're doing a pretty good job at funding those appropriately.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Does, we need any questions from the, is it budget person? Is that what you are? Any, any questions for her or anything? Are we good? Okay. Rick, anything else?
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Well, I guess.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I move that we approve the capital improvement program. I second that.
For 24 through 30?
For 24 through 30.
Okay, we got a motion, a second. Want any more discussion? Anybody? Okay. Yep, yep. Take your role.
Commissioner Ashbaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
Chairman McLean?
Yes.
And Acting Chair Nispit?
Yes. Okay, capital improvement program passes.
Vice Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the department heads and deputies that showed up tonight and spoke. And it's apparent you know your roles really well. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Thanks for asking questions. I hope we weren't too hard on you. But I mean, at least we get the information out there so people can see it and then go, like I say, I appreciate it.
I do want to add my highest gratitude for everybody being here tonight. It, it helps us a lot and we appreciate it.
Okay, so next on the roundtable, we got anything, anything else to talk about?
I do not.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, I will say this, the meeting's adjourned at 7:37.